Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, at ten o'clock A.M. Please pray with us if you care to, and then we'll stand for the pledge allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please, dear Heavenly Father? We thank you for the abundance of blessings you bestow upon us each day. And dear Lord, I'd just like to offer a special prayer today for all the public servants and the volunteers in the county who have a heart for the people that they serve. Dear Lord, I just pray that they would recognize that their first priority and service is to you, and in so doing will greatly enhance their ability to serve the rest of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Sometimes I think we ought to do the National Anthem about right now.
Go ahead.
You lead.
I said sometimes.
You lead, we'll follow.
Yeah.
Indiana Members Credit Union ATM Right of Access.
Yeah, there's a gentleman.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Can you please give us your name?
Brad Herbert. Brad.
Brad Herbert. Thanks, sir. Basically asking to use dedicated Metro Net line.
You could probably, yeah. Would you explain what?
Absolutely. So initially, when we had started with the, this project some time ago, we were gonna have Everstream bring dedicated fiber into the building, which is what the right of access is for, is to cover the Everstream to deliver the fiber in. In order to simplify this a little bit, we've looked at other providers in the area that service this building currently, and Metronet being one of them. So at this point, we do not believe a right of access is necessary because Metronet is already onsite. We would just contract through Metronet to deliver us another uplink that would come out to the ATM machine. That bill comes to us monthly. All work, all fees incurred would obviously come to us that we would cover.
Chris, you got anything to add to that? All good on your end, on our end, secured lines, all that stuff?
Christopher Williams, ITA GIS Administrator.
It works now, doesn't it?
If they are willing to pay for a dedicated Ethernet line from the Metronet D mark coming into the building to their ATM, I don't see a problem with that.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
You're good with that?
Good with that. Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hang on, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Maintenance approval of contractor agreement with BMW Lawn Care pending insurance and legal.
We don't have all the insurance.
Okay. I saw.
There's some insurance in there. That's right. We just haven't met all the requirements yet.
Jason Miller. Court has maintenance. I just need to get the contract approved for BMW Lawn Care to scare of all the county's lawn mowing service.
I'd move to approve just pending the finalization of the insurance requirements.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hang on, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Remember the old days when they just, you mowed, they mowed, you paid them? Gosh.
Maybe someday we'd be communicating to do that.
Wouldn't that be nice? Then we still have to go through all.
Are we the insurer, so?
Yes, that's so. Public Safety Communications approval to reappoint all current board members on the nine-one-one Advisory Board. There is a change of council members from John Myers to Mr. Ron Deere.
We don't actually appoint that seat. The council points that seat. So we just have, you have six seats to appoint, the three police seats and the three fires.
Which are all existing for us.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, I think he just wants reappointment, all those six people.
I would move to point to six people and let the council appoint theirs.
Just for one year?
Yes.
I was just curious why they would have all but one come up at the same time. That's unusual for boards. Normally it's staggering. Nevertheless, it is what it is.
Yeah, I think statutorily quite often that requires a staggered term, but this one doesn't. So.
I have a motion in a second.
Someone I think wants.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further?
We'll just go ahead and read them for the record. Moment two.
You can, if you'd like.
Okay, Scott Carter, James Eisen, Doin Little, Jeremy Powell, Andrew Tames, and Darren Hogg.
Correct. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval to attend Indiana State Child Support Conference June seventh to the Prosecutor's Office through the tent, French Lick, Indiana.
Morning, Joe, the prosecutor's office. I actually thought we had two things on the agenda, not only the chat, but also the noble one too. Okay.
Yes, I just started with the first one.
Just want to make sure. Yeah, we're asking to be allowed to have people set for off two different conferences. The first one is the Child Support Conference in French Lick to send our child support deputy and our lead case manager there. The cost of the conference itself is not gonna be anything. What we're asking for is the covering of the hotel and food and as in any else that's child support related, we would get a sixty-six percent reimbursement. Maybe five hundred, I think should cover everything on that one. So we're seeking approval for the, for that one.
Move to approve. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hang on, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries.
And the second one is the Nova Conference in Denver, Colorado. This is the National Organization for Victim Assistance. We have all new victim advocates in our office. Currently, we lost two to the private sector and one went to a different spot in the county. These people are all pretty, pretty decent in their own right, but this kind of civic training, we just don't, we don't have locally. This won't cost the county a pain. This is all been written into the, to the grant. So we're just asking for the, to be allowed to attend this very specific type of victim advocacy conference.
I'd like to go to one in Denver. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Especially in late August.
Be nice. You know, Naco has them around. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hang on, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Highway Department. And execution two thousand twenty-one annual operational report is first.
Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. Yes, the operational report for two thousand twenty-one has been complete, was forwarded for your review and request approval at today's meeting.
Oh, I got.
I'm ready.
First, I want to commend you on doing your math and sequence instead of having a total at the top and all the contributing numbers below it. So that was a nice step there. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I guess my, my real question, Luke, and I'm sure you got an adequate answer is twenty twenty-one, we ended the year with two million six hundred nineteen thousand roughly more in our cash than what we started the year. Given the need for work all over the county, why did we not utilize those funds?
So two reasons. One, we did not complete all of the work in two thousand twenty-one in our maintenance program that we had identified. In fact, we've got quite a bit of carryover work. We're starting this week. So those funds were unexpended in two thousand twenty-one. I carried them over into this year's budget at the February meeting so we could complete those projects ahead of starting our two thousand twenty-two program. And it's a significant number. Unfortunately for us, it's a lot of work to do. The other item, or the other reason for that additional balance, these numbers are what was reflected in the report that I provided to council for our capital needs and the available cash that we had on hand. Keep in mind a lot of that cash, actually really all of that cash is already earmarked for future phases of projects, but some of it is unexpended or not yet expended on current contracts that we have as well. That February council meeting where I appropriated last year's maintenance money, I had about four million dollars total of appropriations at that meeting, the vast majority of which were for contracts that are already underway. So we've, we have to write that money off because it's identified and earmarked for that work. We just haven't expended all of it yet.
So wouldn't, when you want to include a line item in here and cumber?
So that's the, that's the downside of this report. This is the, this is strictly a finance report, money in and money out. And the format of this report is determined by the State Board of Accounts. So that piece that, that is missing here is exactly what we just talked about. The fact that the bulk of that, if not all of it, it's already spoken for. But since it's just a numbers report, it's, you're fine.
Went down the wrong pipe. I'm sorry.
I'll try better next time.
Yeah, no. And then caffeine directly to the lungs is not good for you.
The other question I had was on your expenditure side, personal services, does that include everything, your health insurance, everything that's total?
Yes, everything in the one hundred series. So retirement.
I assume we did. And then I was wondering why you, you would have capital outlay. I always looked at capital as, as an asset-based item and I'm sure what you're showing is capital outlay, were just improvements you made on streets and roads, right?
Yeah, so that would be essentially any expenditure that's in the four hundred series of the budget across those line items. And that is the money that funds our annual maintenance program, but that's also where we pay for larger scale projects as well, all of the phases for those.
And I guess it's just, that's the way the State Board of Accounts formats this thing?
They just, they just want totals. So the, if you look at the report, each section has, is broken down by the one, two, three, and four hundred series. Personal services, supplies, those different charts. So capital outlays is the four hundred series in the budget. It doesn't give specific information towards projects. It's just total expenditures for the year.
So it's kind of semantics, I guess.
It, it has, it has a purpose. I mean, in terms of tracking the cash balance, but as I mentioned, it misses the fact that projects are multiple-year projects that we have to plan for. That's not accounted for in the, in the format of the report, unfortunately.
And then the other question I had is on your actual mileage, thirty-five point eight-five concrete streets. How many miles of that are streets that don't need repair or do need?
I'd have to compare that to the the concrete report that I've provided last year, but I would say at least half of those, probably over half of those would be in the, in the one, two, and three rating category, which was the zero to
Somewhere around seventeen or eighteen mile. Yeah. And how much cost per mile to redo those in the asphalt program?
It varies a little bit. It depends on if we can reuse the curbs or not. I think the average of the bits that we got last year was about one point six for the roads that were included in that contract. It's less if we can utilize the curbs that are already there. It's quite a bit more if we can. So.
Well, where I was going with it is trying to come up with kind of a number. I know we're gonna be working with the council on the lip aspect of road financing. So you're probably somewhere seventeen, eighteen million dollars or a little north of that.
We.
Redo all of them.
We were pushing, well, what, it was one point six million average per mile.
About twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah. The needs report totaled, had a total cost estimate for those roads that needed, that we believe needed to be replaced in the one-to-ten-year timeframe. And it was, it was in the twenties, may have been pushing thirty million. So.
Yeah.
Some of the neighborhoods, the, the curbs are just too far gone.
Yeah.
Which is unfortunate because obviously then it costs us a lot more to get those reconstructed.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
No, I love numbers.
I know.
Especially when I'm working with Luke. He's hard to catch, I'll tell you. He's hard to catch.
I always have an answer.
Yeah.
Maybe not an answer. Solution to resolution.
I just hope you don't know when they're wrong.
Did he move?
No.
Oh, I moved to accept the report.
Okay, second. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hang on, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries. Brutal execution of construction plans title sheet for Bridge one thirty-six replacement project.
Morning, Daniel Johnston, Highway Engineer. This is a recommendation for approval and execution of the construction plans title sheet for this project, the Bridge one thirty-six replacement, replacement project. This will need to be included, signed, and submitted to end up with the final construction plans prior to bidding, which will occur this coming August twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hang on, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, sir.
Quick note, if I may, on this, in terms of the schedule, we had hoped to construct this project this fall due to utility relocations and also the current price, the construction pricing environment. This work will occur next year, twenty twenty-three.
So you're not gonna do the bid lighting in August?
It's in August, yes, this coming August.
It is in August?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, under Board of Commissioners, approval memorandum of understanding with upstream prevention. Oh, she. Hi.
Good morning.
Well, I'm going to approve it. All look sufficient tonight, all locations and everything.
So we're not indemnifying them anymore?
It's a mutual agreement to identify. There's really aren't that much risks regarding the Knox loan itself. It's perfectly health safe for the individuals. I, what we've been told is the only likelihood of any issues would arise would just be people coming in with a baseball bat, knocking it off a wall kind of thing. So it's really not much of a liability risk that the county would incur for people using the boxes. So it's just unlikely to come up. But right now, it's a mutual agreement to identify each other if something were to come up.
Because I brought this up the last time. I presented this and asked him to remove that. She said they would.
No, she didn't. She said they'd make it mutual. And like we said, we've done a risk assessment and I just don't think there's a very high risk of the problem.
I thought the risk here was not with the physical aspects of what they're doing, but with the potential of someone dying or, or from not having access to it when the situation required or something of that. I kind of, remember I talked about the
You did say that and we researched.
Lightning strikes.
You know, we did research it. We don't think that that's a, a high risk concern.
There should. This is life-saving.
Correct.
Medicine, right?
Correct.
How could you not have a higher risk?
I mean, if it doesn't work.
Well, or if somebody doesn't administer it, or there's some, some reason that.
Not, there's not going to be a duty that arises to, to use it. It's like having an AED.
Yeah, installing these boxes won't create a liability on the county's end if someone doesn't use them. They're stocked, they're gonna be maintained and monitored and restocked as they get used.
I still contend that we shouldn't be indemnifying them. But that's just me.
I don't sure if deputies administer this. I mean, what's the liability risk with them? I guess I would ask the sheriff to come in here and maybe talk about that if he can.
And I assume the indemnity on that would be the good Samaritan law. Sheriff, would that be correct? Yes.
As far as. Our people.
I mean, it's not necessarily our people. I mean, the idea of these boxes is that people can get Narcan out of them and take it home if they want it. There's kind of an unlimited supply of it. So it's not like I'm gonna see somebody in our county, it's not like I'm gonna see somebody in our county building and I'm gonna squirt Narcan up their nose and it doesn't work and I'm, and then we're liable. That's, I don't think it's a likely scenario.
I'm just going by the verbiage. It says partner agrees. Partner would be asked to indemnify and hold harmless upstream from any and all liabilities from losses suffered or incurred by partner with respect to the matters of this memo. I don't think we ought to be indemnifying. Is that, that's just me.
Would you like an explanation?
No.
Okay.
I made a motion.
Oh, you did? Oh. We have a motion. I'm gonna let it die at this point. I need to, I'd like to get a little more information for a second then on.
What more information do you need? I'm making.
I, I just don't, I don't understand the desire to have a box in here with unlimited product.
If it's not the substance of the, kind of that setup, then Kathleen is here if you have, if you want to ask her.
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying it is an unlimited supply of this is what I understand. Is that correct or?
Yeah, that's our understanding. They, they refill these boxes so that's available.
So basically, we would have public coming in here to get that product.
Yeah, and I think ideally there's, they like to have them on the outsides of buildings, but there are obviously drawbacks to that as well, which I'm sure, like I said, Kathleen might be able to explain better.
I said, yeah, so the goal is that, so there's two different types of boxes that we can use or install or ideally have county maintenance install. One of them has a rescue breather in it, and so those would make more sense near the AEDs indoors. Whereas there's another one that doesn't have that piece in it that we could put more naloxone or Narcan kits in. Those would make sense to have outdoors that are available twenty-four seven. As Adam mentioned, the, the Narcan itself is not dangerous to use. It only works if somebody has overdosed from opioids. If I shot it in my nose right now, I'd probably sneeze and not, you know, enjoy having something in my nose, but it doesn't have any adverse effects on an individual who's not overdosing. What research has shown is that in areas where Narcan or naloxone is more available, there is a reduction in overdose deaths as well as an increase, an eventual increase in individuals seeking treatment because they have lived essentially long enough to get to the point where they're ready and able to access treatment. So the, these boxes, we're trying to partner with the county as part of the community aid boxes with the Stop the Bleed kits, the AEDs that the Health Department has installed. But we're also partnering with some of the motels in the area, some of the other community venue spaces so that the Narcan is as publicly available as possible under the statewide standing order.
So we're saying that basically anyone can get to this product, whether it be a minor or an adult?
Yeah, so if, especially in the county buildings, the goal would be to install them as high as possible so that it's not in that, you know, a minor's breach, but still within ADA compliance so that somebody using an assistive device could access it. But again, it's the, it would be freely available, but it doesn't have any adverse effects if you're not overdosing. And the adverse effect, if you're overdosing, is that it brings you back. It knocks the opioids out of the receptors in your brain and allows you to start breathing again.
Okay, as far as if it's not a person that's overdosing, then there's testing, I assume, that's available. It says that this is not harmful to someone that, a minor.
Yeah.
Someone like that.
Yep. Like I said, the, it only, the Narcan only interacts with the opioid receptors in your brain. And if the opioid receptors don't have opioids in them, there's, there's nothing that happens to an individual. It would probably be uncomfortable if somebody's, you know, squeezed.
I didn't catch your name earlier.
Sorry, it's Kathleen Ratcliffe with upstream prevention.
Kathleen. Kathleen, going back to my concern, I'm gonna read the first sentence in paragraph nine, where it says, "Provision of box at locations and supplying and monitoring locations may involve some risk and upstream encourages partners to be sensitive to such risk." Can you explain to me what those risks are?
Yeah, so we borrowed the language from this MOU from Overdose Lifeline, which has been supporting installation of these boxes around the state, and we asked them, what are these risks? And so their risks that they recommended or, or mentioned is that you can get a little bit of building damage. You know, when you install something into a building, you'll have holes and anchors and screws. They mentioned possibility of vandalism, but that they haven't seen that around the state and then increased attention for the locations where it's installed. So if you install a box, there's usually some press around that, so you could get positive or negative attention. But again, it's the, you know, they recommend installing at that maximum ADA compliance height, and they haven't seen issues around the state. It's more of just that kind of general protection clause.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But you said, so basically what we're saying, anybody can get in these boxes anyway, so to me, it would make more sense to maybe have those type boxes outside than in our building. Am I missing something there?
I think it makes, makes the most sense. I do know that there are some locations like the his, the Johnson County History Museum, which is not the right name, who didn't want it on the outdoors because it's a historical building, but was willing to put it indoors. You know, there are some places where I think it makes a lot of sense to have it outdoors, like outside of juvenile detention and probation where they've got that community box anyway to get resources and supplies that if we can connect it to that, that makes a great, to me, a great location. We were trying to work or ideally we're working with each of the buildings the kind of department heads, for lack of better phrasing, to identify where they thought it would make the most sense. And some places it was indoors and some places it was outdoors.
Do, do we have specific locations in this building, Jason? Can you answer that question if we looked at this or?
Assume that's where they would be placed.
And, and just for reasoning, I don't have a problem with the, the liability issue or that, that issue. I just have a kind of a problem of where we would put those because of the ability for even children to access those. If they're gonna be by our security post, I guess I don't have a whole lot of problem with that at that point.
Kathleen, can you ask me one question? Is there any other locations throughout the county that these would be located outside other facilities of, i.e. fire departments, police stations? I'm just asking if there's any other public places outside these are located or will be located.
Yeah, so we have two currently installed at Motels in Franklin. So the Quality Inn in Franklin is in their lobby, I believe, by their vending machine, as well as Hilltop, and I think it's in their, their lobby as well. We do not yet have them installed, but are working towards getting them installed at each of the county's library branches outdoors. They are not installed there yet because they want their staff trained first, just, you know, as a precaution. So we're working through training their staff, probably mostly in June, and then we'll hopefully have those installed soon. Upstream did not sponsor the box, but there is a box in Edinburgh across from their community center. It's on private locate, private property. It's not on the community center property, but it's outdoors as well. So it has that 24/7 access. So they are getting, like I said, getting installed wherever we can get them. We're focusing first on high-traffic areas. So again, getting it into anybody's pocket who is willing to take it as well as into those hotspot areas where the EMS and fire are doing those Narcan runs so that maybe there's faster access. Again, the goal being that the more individuals who have access to it, when I see somebody, I am protected under a good Samaritan law that as long as I'm, you know, acting in good faith and, and, you know, assisting EMS if they show up, you know, that we're providing that life-saving access. At one point, I don't know if it's this, if it's still true, but at one point, you are more likely to be around somebody who was overdosing than a car crash. And, you know, I think the provisional numbers from the CDC nationwide said that we're losing 120 people a day to overdose. And so it's just this goal of how can we get this life-saving medication in as many hands or as easily accessible as possible, whether that's in a building or outside of a building.
Thank you. I still contend that the, the risk is, the reward far outweighs the risk on this. Giving this access to those people that you don't know what's going through their head, but if they overdose, they can't get the medication, they die. Another statistic, I would rather be on the positive side of that than the negative side.
And if I may, the, the state statute offers upstream, the county itself, limited liability, so absent gross negligence, the county's immune from liability on, with these boxes being used and installed as well, so.
Sheriff, just by not having, do you have any issue with those being installed where your security people are?
Shaking his head no.
Thank you, Sheriff. You're, you're fine.
I'm gonna remake that motion. Today or not, but.
I, I, I guess.
With that discussion being had.
I would second it on the basis that these boxes be put in secure, security manned locations. Because I still have a problem with minors being able to get to this stuff. So if you would amend the motion for that, I would accept that as a second.
Or we would put it, I mean, all these locations that we have listed here, the health department. I would think it would be a public view of any of our people manning, if it be, I'm gonna say Miriam because she's out in the lobby currently at health department. Seeing that, uh, community corrections. Uh, that would most likely be on the outside of the building. Is that true, Kathleen? Community corrections.
I think that, that was their goal, was to have it on the outside.
Juvenile probation would be inside the building. I would recommend it being inside the building in a secure, okay? Sheriff's Department, I think that would be discretion on the sheriff where he would put that from a security standpoint. County museum would have to be inside from a secured location because you don't really wanna leave it on the outside of the building. Courthouse, we have security in both courthouse, West End, the regular courthouse, adult probation, I would assume would be in the lobby. Or you can looking on the, I would say in the lobby at adult probation also. Just so we have security. And the health department, we just talked about that. So those would be the ideal locations, and I would ask her to get with our maintenance, Jason, and work with that with security and get those placed in the proper place.
Yeah, I believe JC with the health department has been working to identify locations and will work towards that installation piece, but yes. Like I said, we were leaning towards wherever the individual building felt like it made the most sense or was allowable. And so if that's the, you know, it needs to be someplace with security or for, if there's not security like the health department, we can work with that.
Jason, you're able to, to work with them and make sure those get put in proper locations. Okay. On that basis, I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries.
And I'm not opposed to what you're doing as far as the service, I commend you for that, just the language and the.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Acceptance of lost quote in the word for contract, I see thirty-six dash one dash twelve dash five for Park Department Dunn Parking Lot paving project.
Sure, I have those. Um, we have solicited three quotes for the Dunn Parking Lot. There's some disparity in them. I believe they differed on their expertise as to which method to be used, just that caveat. We, so we solicited three quotes, Globe Asphalt did not respond. Milestone Contractors, eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars, and Smith Paving and Excavating, forty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars. That's a low bid.
I'm gonna make this comment. These prices kind of soon be all over the board, but what I've seen. I, I, I would issue these commissioner Barrett and Kevin with Parks Department and kind of review these and make sure that content, everything is in these quotes that we've asked for before we release this, and I would do this at the next meeting if we have that time available.
We, we do have that time, and, and I'm aware of these projects and the process, so.
Okay.
It, it shouldn't take long to do that, but.
Okay.
It would be working with Brad Weiser.
Oh, Brad, okay.
For correction.
That's fine, I didn't see.
I saw Brad's name on our.
Yeah, I kind of mentioned the, the variance in pricing or the quotes last time. I, I would assume if you're putting something out for bid, you, there would be certain bid requirements or parameters for them to bid. So as I understand from Kevin's response, Milestone was talking about melanin, the old stuff off, removing it. The other guy wasn't, I mean, shouldn't that have been re, in the, in the request for bids that.
I'd say I'm gonna let Brian look at and see, make sure I, I didn't read the specs before they went out, so.
And there, there were onsite visitations on this to, for people to understand the project. And I won't get into the particulars, you, you're.
That's the only thing I was concerned about is if you're gonna do a request for bids, I, I would think you have a set specifics on exactly what you want.
Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but just by not have had, they, they were allowed access to the site to look at these, correct? You know, is it Kevin?
I asked Kevin.
I'm sorry, Kevin. They were allowed access, correct? Okay.
I'm gonna show you review these.
I understand.
You wanna move them to the next meeting then to approve local quote, is that what you're saying? Sorry.
No, I'm, I wanna release these as are, as they are, but I want to actually pending review, pending review by Brian and Kevin or Brad, whoever's gonna review these. If they're okay, then you can come back and we can ratify it if you need to move this.
You actually have to do a contract, so.
Okay, well.
So you guys, you go ahead and if, if it's okay, then let me know and we'll prepare the contract and then you can do that at your next meeting and that will kind of serve us up. Okay?
Second. I have a motion second to look at and review on the Dunn Parking Lot. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Kevin Street.
Yeah, similar process. Globe Asphalt did not return a quote. Milestone Contractors quote is twenty thousand dollars and Smith Paving is eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
My motion would carry through to this and also the sign.
Second.
For saving graces are gonna carry through to the third one too.
Especially on the third one.
Can we go ahead and just, if you don't mind, give the pricing on the third one?
Coyote Trace Parking Lot, no quote from Globe Asphalt. Milestone is a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars and Smith Paving is thirty-one thousand seventy-six dollars.
Motion.
Their motion, same motion.
Motion and second.
More so on this one than anything.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Approval of letter engagement, those crossroads engineers for schematic design and hospital road property, for hospital road property pending legal review.
This is what we talked about in the committee meeting. Usports came back with this quote of sixty-five hundred dollars for conceptual drawings to lay out that campus. So, and we talked in the thirty thousand dollar range at our, so it's sixty-five hundred to get some conceptual, so. That's all I'm asking.
The motion.
Making a motion, yeah, I'm making a motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve Crossroad Engineers for the schematic design for the hospital road property. Any further? Pending legal.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed.
That was on page two.
I hadn't noticed it wasn't on here, so I moved to this one. Discussion regarding fire, fire district parcels that would have to do with Hensley and Franklin.
Franklin, yes. I have been in meetings with both departments and our trustee, so there is an area that is kind of no man's land, I think. Out there, and if you would allow me, if they wanna speak on it, they can. Or you can allow me to continue negotiations to try to get this figured out. I know our GISK has been out for a little while ill, so I'd like to pull her into this mix too and with the auditor's office also. So you guys understand all this, and it's, I've seen a couple of different maps and.
Yep, I've been involved in it, so.
If you wanna handle it, that's fine. I don't care, but I think one of us needs to handle it. Get with these people and try to get some clarity and get some boundaries.
I, I just, yeah, I think that, the thing that I'm, in getting involved in it, the thing that that I understand though is, is that there's some history to this that I think needs to be considered. And also that the timeframe is, you know, this has been something that started back in November of last year. And I think this needs to become, it needs to come to a close and quit dragging it out, so. And that's all I would ask is that we just get a resolve and, and let these people go on about doing their jobs and.
The one thing for the, their area in question is it has been mutual aid between both departments, so the people in that area are being covered. I think it's just, it's in a little bit deeper weeds. Tax standpoints and who's covering and where the lines are drawn, we can establish and move forward from there.
I guess in lieu of that, will there be contact being made shortly on this?
Yeah, I'm gonna caveat that by saying when Kay gets back, I don't know if she's back in or not yet.
Andrew Smith, the assessor's office has been working on it some too, so.
She wasn't involved in the last part, so I'll, I'll bring her in.
So. Okay, honey, we had Hensley Fowler here to speak. You guys need to speak or do you understand if we can just move forward in a more timeframe fashion? Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, to me, it seemed pretty simple solution. Who can best service the area quickest and best?
That's kind of what I thought too. I think, yeah, I get it, but I think history, history's gonna show who's probably been serving that more, but we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Anything else on that?
No.
New old business claims and credit card.
I just got a piece of paper.
Thank you.
He's got questions. Thanks, guys.
Lydia was here too. Thank you, Lydia.
On, on the claims, under commissioner, we had a claim for a SPAR Economics Chamber for seventy-five hundred dollars.
That's through the Ready Grant Program.
But what's it?
We authorized, was it fifteen?
You said that contract that we did a while?
Yeah, we did a contract a while ago of like fifteen thousand dollars put towards the Ready Grant Program.
Oh, that's.
And this is just, this is just there.
Alright.
Because it has to be built through.
Yeah, I remember it now.
Okay, in ED function, it has to be built through that.
Yeah, and then Luke left and I, I just had a question. I notice this on claims frequently, and I just, for some reason, came to my attention this time. Why both fleet and highway buy fuel? I would think that only one entity would buy fuel.
I think it's historic.
I'm just curious.
I got here first.
Okay.
Luke Maston, I have a supervisor. The bulk of the diesel fuel is used by the highway department. So highway goes ahead and pays for the diesel fuel and then bills the occasional usage by any of the other entities. And the flip side of that, we are, highway is not the biggest user by far of unleaded fuel, so that's paid out of the fleet program. And then again, that's then billed out to any of the entities that fuel. It used to be both were paid out of highway. But ultimately that didn't, and that's even before we added other entities in, like the city or access. But highway was floating, essentially floating that money and was a small user of the unleaded overall. So we identified essentially of the two fuel types, who uses it the most? Because then that means there's less billing that we have to, to worry about to outside entities.
I kind of anticipated that, so I'm going back to what Bob said in our last meeting where it's taken him a day and a half to bill these three outside entities. And so you're billing people for diesel, he's billing people for unleaded, why wouldn't you just run it all through one entity or the other?
We do. The, the fuel invoices are paid from highway, but fleet handles the billing for both as far as.
Okay, so it's a minute ago, you said you were doing it.
Well, we pay for the invoices, sorry if I misstated that. Highway does not send billing out to anyone else. We just pay the invoices on delivery, fleet handles figuring out the billing.
Well, that was just my question. I was just curious.
Would it make sense though for all the billing to go through fleet instead of separating those two out since some diesel is being used, Luke, or is there, is it? I'm just curious.
If we did that, we probably would end up with some billing cycles where there, there may not be much of any billing to anyone other than highway. You know, if we had a, say we had two diesel deliveries for fifteen thousand gallons, highway's gonna use fourteen of that easy. So rather than having to bill large amounts out, since we're the, with the largest user, we just pay for it and then we're only billing in that scenario ten out, not whatever I said it was.
And that billing is done through fleet though?
Correct, yes, yeah.
So I'm just trying to make sense of why the invoice just can be paid through fleet and then build out in that process.
It could be. Um, what ultimately would have to.
Somebody's paying for it regardless.
Yeah, so we'll we'll write up the diesel invoices. Highway will write up the diesel invoices to be paid. That could be paid from the commissioner's fuel fund. But that kind of puts us in the scenario we were in a long time ago where then the commissioner's line item is floating. The majority of the diesel fuel until highway gets billed and pays for it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we pick, we tried to pick who was using what the most to help limit how much each fund had to float. That was before, actually before we had a fleet director.
That makes sense.
Uh, one more highway. There was a gasoline surcharge I damp for a hundred and eighty dollars.
That is, we have an annual permit required for our underground fuel tanks. So that's the that's the permit fee to iden for those tanks.
So it's not a fuel surcharge.
Well, we pay for it out of the fuel surcharge because that is the. Our gasoline surcharge line item is the money that the five cents per gallon that comes in. It all goes into that line item and then we use that for maintenance or in this case for the to help pay for the permits required for the tanks.
So you don't title an expense by the revenue stream. You would title it by the nature of the expense, but I'll let that go.
The gasoline surcharge is the. Is the name of the line item in our that it comes from. Yeah, but it covers a wide variety of expenses solely related to maintenance of the.
Actually. Uh, then I have one, nine one one had a eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy one dollar nine cents. American medical response and I I know we talked about that, but I couldn't remember exactly what that was. Anybody remember?
Aren't they the ambulance service?
Travis DeBoer with nine one. I don't know exactly he's been preparing for that, but I would assume that it's probably for the pre arrivals. We pay AMR to do the pre arrival instructions for callers and we have an annual contract with them. That's the only thing I could see an expense.
It seemed like I remember that medical, American medical response, but I couldn't remember what it was. We'll find out.
Thanks.
Is Glenn's gay still here? Bob out there? But it just a quick question, you know, here a while back, I think he purchased twenty car washes for a hundred dollars. And I was commanding him on that. I just wonder why we're still paying ten ninety five a piece on the others, why we're not able to get. Twenty car washes like he did at the time. Just curious. And and then, um, we we had a list and that sent me a list. You guys probably got it too, an email. Of the various. Offices that hadn't submitted their manifest on credit cards. I I don't have that list with me right now, but it was it was considerable in size. I think there was like seven or eight or nine departments that didn't. Submit a manifest. Let me, you know, Brad's always referencing the the private sector, his business and what he does. And I could tell you, if this was my business, those people would be in deep doo doo today. I just had it with him. Every month after month, we continue to get this and up to the point where I would recommend we suspend their credit cards. If they're not gonna send us the information we need to approve the expenditures, then I don't think we ought to be allowing them to make those expenditures. You know, me, credit cards, that's always one of my favorites. Favorite concerns, but I can't. And again, I get, I I can look at the credit card statement, but that doesn't give me any idea of the indication or detail of what they're purchasing. And and still some of them, they'll have a purchase from Amazon. They simply put supplies. Well. Supplies could be anything, so. Anyway, that's my recommendation on that. I would recommend that. Those entities that haven't supplied the manifest, we suspend their credit card. Looking for a second on that.
I'm gonna give one tonight.
Well, I mean, what? You wouldn't tolerate that in your business and.
No, we're not.
They, yeah, and I I'm to the point, I keep harping about some of these things month after month. People get tired of hearing me. I know that and I get tired of saying it.
I've had the resolve for that for nine years. But.
Yeah, and we've made some strides. I mean, we got to the point where we were requesting a manifest again, and that's really been beneficial and helpful. And proving these credit card expenses, but without it, it's just becomes. It's not difficult. It just becomes a guess. What are we approving?
How how about this? How about we just put those departments on notice that if this happens again? That's what the process will be. And I'll go with you on it.
Goodbye me. We put all departments on notice.
All departments on notice, yes. Turn in your manifest if you want to continue the use of your credit cards that we supply.
And then, of course, I'm always railing about the number of Amazon purchases and just.
Then I won't get in.
Yeah.
They do buy local, they buy T shirt express.
Yeah. And and I I admit, I've got a personal vendetta or whatever for Amazon, but. Uh, a lot of times when I do get a manifest and they made a purchase at Amazon, it's paper clips and. Paper and pens and pencils and all of that. A lot of this stuff. Uh, could be bought at our local office supply places or hardware stores and that support our local businesses and help those people. But, you know, I know it's expedient. It's easy to just get online and. Punch in a number and get the get the shipment. Uh, I can't fault Amazon. My God, they do a great job as far as what they supply.
They're next to.
And the timing, but I still, I mean, Amazon does so many things that are detrimental to the. Principles we have here in this country as far as. Freedoms, freedom of expression and a variety of other things that they seem to want to stifle. And it's just hard for me to. See a local government support an entity of that nature. Here lately, they've released some new things that they're gonna do that really run up the flag on their liberal side. So anyway, I just ask goes. Those offices that they've least consider, and I know you could set up an account, believe me, I've had them in the past. Local vendors. And and do the same thing. It's just go online and you put your purchases in, they'll bring it right over to you. They've got delivery. So it's not like you're infect where they probably do it the same day. So anyway, just I keep railing about this, but. If you want to take pride in your country, you better. Start doing things a little bit different in that regard. Thank you and amen.
Is there a motion to approve things?
No, I'm not gonna make a motion because I can't approve it because I don't know what's on the manifest.
I'll make a motion to approve.
That would be for me to make, for me to make a a motion to approve after all of that for rich.
Well, I guess I have a second to. That motion is second. Any further?
You got that, sir?
No. But I will, I will agree. Uh, I'm a proponent to use local. I think everybody knows that. I I use local as much as possible and I I would ask the same. That please just try to use local as much as we can. All those in favor signify by saying I I oppose. Motion carries. Commissioner minutes four twenty five twenty two regular, four twenty five twenty two specials with counsel, four twenty nine twenty two special. And five nine twenty two regular meeting.
Sounds like pandemic time.
Have a motion second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I I pose. Motion carries. Any public comment? Society's Commissioner West. This has opened up to you guys.
I got one under old business.
Okay, so we got old business?
Well, under old business, we've talked about this on numerous occasions. I just want to bring it up today to see if we can get some movement on it. We've talked about the five million dollar White Line Road Bond that was retired about a year ago. And redoing a a similar bond of that amount to use for. Highway Department for street and road repairs. And I'm not talking about using it specifically on the subdivision with concrete streets, but. Uh, a good portion of it would probably go there, but I I'd like for this body to consider. Doing that. Putting in place of another five million dollar bond. And. And in part in saying that, uh, I I think if the council moves on their local income tax. Aspect of revenue for highway department that that money could be used to retire this bond rather quickly. So we minimize the interest on it, but. Right now, we need to get. Get some more dollars out there for some of these road projects.
I'm at this present today, I probably won't second that because I know the council's working on a big. Package coming out for road funding and a whole bunch of stuff. And I would like to more be in discussion with them. About this going forward. I mean, I I'm I'm not opposed to this, but I I just don't think right now is the right time. I think. If we look at this with the council and put together a whole package, because there's there's a lot of different things working on right now and I just don't want to start spurring off here and. Council goes, what are you doing? You know, why are you doing this? So that's kind of why I'm not going to second that today. Not that I don't agree, we do need funding. I know Luke will be the first and you'll be the second to step up. Uh, and say, yes, we do need it right now, but with the bond current rate markets are are up right now. So I just want to look at that a little bit more as far as the total package deal and not just do a five million, but look at maybe a twenty million. You know, that we really need. So that's why I'm going to do that. So I mean, I I I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
I understand. What I'm proposing with the five million, at least get it on the table as something we're ready to do. And that would give the council even more consideration and what their deliberations might bring about. Uh, in in the absence of that, we're still just kind of relying on them. I think we need to be the, we need to be driving this thing a little bit harder and by putting it in place and they can always. You know, after they come to a conclusion. Say, yeah, you know, that you don't need to find, we're gonna put this in right now or whatever.
I think, you know, I know there's some ARPA funds that are available discretionary and I know we've talked about that and that's that's.
I'm counting those aside. In addition.
Yeah, I know. I'm I'm still gonna hold on that. I I just think we need to, I don't want to get spurred off with them right now. Um, on a different way, so unless Brian's gonna second that.
I I I I don't know that we can even do that at this point in time, but I I guess my thought on this would be just like everything else. Let's. Can we get something done instead of just continuing to kick it down the road and drag it out? I mean, if that applies to the council or whoever, just. It just seems like we just sit and spin and spin and we just don't get anything resolved or done. And I just, I think we've got to do something to get this stuff moving forward, John.
Well, that was, and I agree wholeheartedly. That was the reason that I brought this motion forward is to try to get something going. Instead of just continuing to talk about it.
Maybe with this conversation, that'll spark something. I don't think we can.
No, technically, yeah, the bonds have to be authorized by a coun- a council ordinance, so. I mean, it'd be council action, but I understand if you're just trying to express your support for that. Avenue.
Yeah, but they can authorize it till we get it in place, so. Or or start to process. That's all I'm doing. Trying to let them know that we're ready to do it. Yeah.
And I agree, we we should be ready to do it and we should be doing something, so. But that may be, I know we don't have any council members here today, but.
No, you're right.
Maybe, maybe we can get to, maybe we get something moving.
We did get three million from.
We did.
So that's that's out there.
Oh, yeah, that's something.
Yeah, that's good. We already got one point five million already issued to some subdivisions.
Got a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
Everywhere, so.
It's not like we're not doing anything, just trying to prudently. So move for German, sir.
Second.
Have motion second, Jerry. Thank you.